Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this July 5th regular meeting of the Zion City Council to order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McDowell?
Here.
Commissioner Fisher?
Here.
Commissioner Frierson?
Here.
Commissioner Holmes? Mayor McKinney?
Here. Item number three is the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. President, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Please join in Pledge of Allegiance for a flag. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. This evening, Commissioner McDowell of Christ Community Church is going to lead us in prayer.
All right. I want to read before the prayer just a little of a prayer of King David from Psalm 11. "In the Lord I take refuge; how then can you say to me, 'Flee like a bird to your mountain? For look, the wicked bend their bows; they set their arrows against their strings to shoot from the shadows at the upright in heart when the foundations are being destroyed. What can the righteous do?'" And the answer to that question, the Psalmist goes on to say that the Lord is in his holy temple, and the righteous continue to do the righteous thing. And so, Father, we just want to come before you now, and we don't want to flee when there are wicked people doing wicked things. And the Psalmist asks this question, "When the foundations are being destroyed, what will the righteous do?" And the answer is to continue doing the right things. And so, Lord, help us to be strong, to stand strong up against the wicked that exists, the evil that exists in our society. And those righteous continue to stand strong against wicked and evil people. And, Lord, I guess I'm thinking about all of this because of what happened in Highland Park. And, Lord, we're grateful that our law enforcement agencies were able to arrest this perpetrator who committed these acts of evil against the residents and guests of Highland Park during a parade. Lord, we're thankful that justice can be served. But we realize that there are many who are grieving and mourning because of the loss of life and because of personal injury and long hospital stays and recovery. And so, Father, we pray for mercy. We ask that you would grant quick recoveries to those that are injured, and we pray, Lord, that your presence would be felt with those who have lost loved ones. And we ask, Father, that you would allow events like this to help us to stand strong against the evil that exists in our society. Lord, we just pray that you would guide our council tonight in the decisions that have to be made. Thank you for allowing us to be here, and we ask that your blessing would be upon us in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Commissioner McDowell. I would also ask us to have a moment of silence as we think about what happened to our neighbors to the south, but also, as you read the papers every day, there was a police officer in Chicago that went to handle a domestic dispute and was ambushed when he got off the elevator. I'm thankful for our first responders, not only in our community, for what they do in running towards trouble instead of staying, instead of running away from it, and everything that they do to help make our community and our residents feel safe during these very difficult times. So if we would have a moment of silence for the injured, the wounded in Highland Park, those that have passed away, and those who will be scarred for many years because of this event, we hope that they can heal mentally and be able to move forward in a positive way without hate and malice. Thank you. Next item, number four, agenda changes. Do any of the commissioners have any agenda changes? If not, is there a motion to accept the agenda as presented? So moved. Motion by Frierson.
Second.
Second by McDowell. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries. Item number five, citizens' comments. We have Antoinette Lewis with us this evening. She'd come up with all of our citizen comments. We allow three minutes for conversation, and if it's an item that we can respond to right away, we will. Either that or we'll respond to you after the council meeting.
My name is Antoinette Lewis. I live at 21st and 3rd, corner of 173. And my concern is the rats that's growing along the south side of 173. And that would've been an issue, that would've been a problem. I was up here the other day and I talked to somebody in the building department, and he said that the city owns that, I mean, not the city, he says the state owns that, and that guys don't have no control of the rats being cut.
And that's, that's the issue at hand?
Yes, and then also up on the east side of the alley behind where I live, there's rats also growing among the premises. And I'm not trying to come up with no rats and stuff like that, so I'm a bit concerned about my area.
Okay. Okay. All right. Thank you. I can address the one item. I know with Highway 173, it is a state highway. Occasionally, we do have our mowing crews that go out and take care of those issues along highways when there's an issue like that. Also, we just have two college students that are doing that right now. We just hired them on June 1st. They are in charge of the task of maintaining all the vacant lots and properties throughout the city, so they will get to it.
Okay, and I appreciate it.
In the alleyway, another issue. Now, the alleyway behind homes, that is the residents' responsibility to take care of the parkways behind their homes, and I can tell you, I go through the alleys, not running from anybody, as Commissioner McDowell was talking about, but just checking on things as I go around the city, and I notice that there are a lot of people that don't mow that parkway, and that is the responsibility of the residents. And I know that's one of the things that the building department, if there's a report on it, they can send letters to the owners about it.
I know I reported before, and we just take care of it.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you very much. All right. Camilla Anderson? Is there a Camilla Anderson here?
Oh, she left.
Okay. Jean Anderson? She left as well?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. That's it for citizens' comments. Thank you, Ms. Lewis, for your, your comments this evening.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. Item number six is consent agenda.
Approval of minutes of a special meeting held on June 2nd, 2022 at 4:00 p.m., and approval but not released of closed session minutes of a meeting held on June 2nd, 2022 at 4:03 p.m., a regular meeting held on June 7th, 2022 at 7:00 p.m., and a special meeting held on June 13th, 2022 at 5:30 p.m.
Is there a motion for the approval of a minute? So moved. Motion by McDowell?
Second.
Second by Fisher. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries.
Bills vouchers 140841 through 140998 drawn on Huntington National Bank.
Is there a motion to approve the bill?
So moved.
Motion by Fisher?
Second.
Second by McDowell. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries. Item number seven, considering passing resolution as follows, 7A, to participate in a surface transportation grant for improvement to 27th Street from Galilee Avenue to Emus Avenue per Director Roberts.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Commissioner. What you have in front of you is a resolution to participate in the service, surface transportation grant for improvements on 27th Street. This program provides federal funding for 80% of construction observation and construction costs. On April 29th, 2022, IDOT held a letting and did opportunity for this project. Prior to awarding the project, the lowest responsible bidder, to the lowest responsible bidder, IDOT requires the city to approve a resolution to participate in the federal grant program and to also authorize the match of federal funds. Federal funding for this, is estimated for this project at $855,600. The city's estimated shared cost would be $213,900. Staff is recommending and requesting approval of the resolution for the local public agency agreement for federal participation and federal fund match. Funding for this project is included in the fiscal year 23, more field tax plus.
Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by McDowell?
Second.
Second by Frierson. Any questions, comments?
Just thanks for working on getting this grant.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries. Item eight, consider passing ordinances as follows. 8A, extending a special use permit for a medical cannabis cultivation center in the G1 General Industrial Zoning District for property located east of Deborah Avenue at 2809 Damascus per Administrator Nabel.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. The, not to step on Director Ianson's toes, for some following items here, but a lot of these next items all relate to some cannabis variances and special use permits. We're just trying to keep these, all of these sites viable while the interested parties still continue to work with the state and work with licensing and IDOT and whatever regulations and hurdles that they have to go through to, in this industry. So as long as we don't have other developers, other potential projects for these areas, there's no downside to continuing to extend these, to keep the sites viable for licensing. So that's, that's what this first one is here. This is the cannabis cultivation center with Flat Rock down by DC Automotive. It's been going for years now. The applicants are still pursuing options to either expand existing supply with the state, whether it be new licenses, or continue to have them review their application for, for awarding. So we want to make sure that whatever efforts they have, like I said, the site's viable, that that's not a reason why they would deny them. So that's, item number one is extending that special use permit, and I would recommend approval as presented.
All right. Is there a motion to approve extending, extending the special use permit for a medical, medical cannabis cultivation center?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Fisher?
Second.
Second by McDowell. Questions, comments?
This is at their request.
Yes. Yes.
All right. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries. Item 8B, to enter into ground lease agreement between Flat Rock Holdings LLC and the City of Zion for certain property located at 2809 Damascus per Administrator Nabel.
Thank you again, Mayor and Commissioners. Now that you've approved the special use permit extension, this is the corresponding lease that spells out the terms should they be awarded a license on how that site would operate and what we would give them that. So we're just extending those lease terms as well.
Is there a motion to extend the lease agreement?
So moved.
So moved by Fisher?
Second.
Second by McDowell. Questions, comments? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries. Item 8C, extending a variance from Zion Municipal Code Section 102-606, 8, Article 12, adult-use cannabis infuser for property located at 3101 through 3199, 16th Street, per Director Ianson.
Thank you, Your Honor. Elevator Organics LLC has requested an unamended extension to the variance for the adult-use cannabis infuser, adult-use processor for property located at 3101 through 3199, 16th Street.
Is there a motion to extend the variance?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Fisher? Second by McDowell. Questions or comments?
Just a general question. Have they given any indication of where they are with the licensing, or is this?
They have a recent update to this request that they continue to...
So they still think that they have a viable option available? They're hoping?
They're hoping.
Yeah. Okay.
Any additional questions, comments? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries. Item 8D, extending a variance from Zion Municipal Code Section 102-608, 8, Article 12, adult-use cannabis transporting organization for property located at 3101 through 3199, 16th Street, per Director Ianson.
Thank you, Your Honor. Again, Elevator Organics LLC has requested an unamended extension to the variant, for the variance of the adult-use cannabis transportation organization for the property located at 3101, 3199, 16th Street.
Is there a motion to extend the variance?
Yeah, I'll make the motion.
Motion by McDowell?
I'll second.
Second by Fisher?
Just to change that.
Questions, comments? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries. Item 8E, extending a special use permit to operate an adult-use cannabis craft grower for property located at 3101 through 3199, 16th Street, per Director Ianson.
Thank you, Your Honor. Last request of Elevator Organics LLC is requesting an unamended extension to the special use permit for adult-use cannabis craft grower at property located at 3101 through 3199, 16th Street.
Is there a motion to extend the special use permit to operate the adult-use cannabis craft grower?
Commissioner Frierson's trying to... I thought mine was coming up. Well, I mean, Commissioner Holmes would normally be, you know, making these...
Motion by Frierson?
I'll second.
Second by Fisher. Questions or comments? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries. Item 8F, establishing the Brighton Pond Special Service Area Number One in the City of Zion and providing for a public hearing per City Attorney.
This is the final step in the SSA, oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. This is the final step in the SSA process for the Brighton Pond's property. As we have discussed and as we held a public hearing with regards, and which there are no objectors to, the SSA will benefit from, or provide for preventative road maintenance in the form of snow removal services for the Brighton Pond subdivision. And in the event additional funds are available, after all expenses are paid for, we said it's no removal services, additional road maintenance may be considered. This is not, this will not be an actual physical obligation of the state, but we will allow for the funding of this to have the, the residents have better roads, which will also assist the first responders in the city. So we have vetted this. Again, it came in through with no objectors from the area to be affected, and we do it forward to your support on this issue.
All right. Is there a motion to establish the Brighton Pond Special Service Area Number One?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Fisher?
Second.
Second by McDowell. Questions, comments?
I just wanted to make a comment. Did ask that there would just be a slight revision to this, and thank you, Attorney Vasselli, for doing that. Just to make it clear that the primary benefit to Brighton Pond's would be snow removal, just because of the amount of money that's being collected, which is just over $10,000. So any kind of road maintenance will, will be very limited, if any.
That's all for Lexnow here.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, just, just to piggyback on that, that I think one of the changes in here is because of the preventative maintenance piece, because of the damage that ice saw, things that do to continued erosion of that.
Yeah, absolutely.
It's, it's more like stop the bleeding first by getting that stuff addressed, and then, as, as you mentioned, any excess, which is probably not likely to be addressed to repair manage. So, yeah.
Okay. We had a motion and a second. Any additional comments? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries. Item 8G, authorizing the entering into and the execution of a school resource officer agreement per Chief Barton.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Commissioners. I respectfully request the review and approval of the intergovernmental agreement between the City of Zion and Zion Elementary District 6, specifically pertaining to the school resource department.
Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Frierson?
Second.
Second by McDowell. Questions or comments? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries. Item 8H, regarding the disposition of surplus property per Chief Barton.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, McKinney, and Commissioners. The city received through donation a gun and equipment cleaning station several years ago. That equipment has served the department well, but it's become too expensive to maintain at this point. The equipment is identified as a bio circle, 600C, serial number is 600C512304. It is staff recommendation to claim this property as surplus and donate to appropriate party or dispose of, no party is willing to receive.
Is there a motion? So moved. Motion by Frierson?
Second.
Second by McDowell. Questions or comments? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries. Item number nine, discussion, authorization, approval. Nine H, heavy weight of bids, cleaning and maintenance services, City Hall Police Administration, Public Works, per Director Ianson.
Thank you, Your Honor. At the June 6th, 2022 bid, I'll consider City of City 5, the cleaning services for street law, police administration, public works. Lowest bidder, Apple Creek, Minnesot, was contracted with the city in the past, who can never renew their contract due to state complaints and performance issues. The second lowest bidder, VMG, followed the service. Our current cleaning service was not responsible by the committee and expired insurance initiative, which has been corrected. The maintenance business is essentially tied, staff, equipment, and all this, and still contract with VMG Services for 60 days, including the process.
All right. Is there a motion to reject the bids, extend the current contract with VMG Services for 60 days?
So moved.
Motion by McDowell?
Second.
Second by Fisher. Clerk, oh, excuse me, questions or comments? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries. Item 9B, consider approval of SAO forensic lab membership fee change per Chief Barton.
Thank you again, Honorable Mayor, McKinney, and Commissioners. This is regarding the membership of the Lake County State's Attorney's Office forensic lab membership fee change effective July 1 of 2022. The City of Zion Police Department uses the State's Attorney's Office forensic lab for a wide range of services pertinent to the investigation and charging of criminal cases brought to the Zion Police Department. Staff request and recommends a continued membership of the Lake County State's Attorney's Office for the forensic services. Effective July 1 of 2022, the membership rate for the City of Zion will be $4,995 annually.
Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
A motion by Frierson?
Second.
Second by McDowell. Questions or comments? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion nine, excuse me, item 9C, consider approval of annual renewal with current technologies for Chief Barton.
Thank you again, Honorable Mayor and Commissioners. Staff have received and reviewed an annual agreement renewal with current technologies, which is our milestone camera service provider. Staff respectfully request and recommend approval of the service agreement in the amount of $2,138.84 for the fiscal year 22, 23.
Is there a motion to approve the annual renewal with current technologies?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Frierson?
Second.
Second by McDowell and echo by Fisher. Questions, comments? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries. Item 9D, consider approval of Lake County Major Crime Task Force membership per Chief Barton.
Thank you again, Honorable Mayor, McKinney, and Commissioners. This is regarding the membership of, or with the Lake County Major Crime Task Force membership fee. The City of Zion Police Department uses, uses the Lake County Major Crime Task Force for violent crime offenses, including homicide aggravated value, where serious body-to-body murder death is likelier, and is pertinent to the investigation and charging of criminal cases brought to or investigated by the Zion Police Department. Staff request and recommends a continued membership with the Lake County Major Crime Task Force for investigative services. Effective January 1 of 2022 through December 31 of 2022, the membership rate for the City of Zion is $1,992 for the calendar year.
Is there a motion to consider the approval of the major crime task force membership?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Frierson?
Second.
Second by Fisher.
Is it just delay billing, the reason that this is retro?
Yeah.
Any questions, comments? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries. Item 9E, request permission to hire two patrol officers to act as school resource officers for District 6, per Chief Barton.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, McKinney, and Commissioners. I think I'm done after this one. So, on Monday, May 16th, 2022, the Zion Elementary School District, District 6, adopted and approved a plan to hire two Zion Police Officers to act as school resource officers for their district. In light of the troubling incidents occurring in our nation's schools, combined with the opportunity to partner with our schools to cultivate positive relationships between the Zion Police Department and our young people from our community, I respectfully request the approval to hire two additional officers to fill the need for this request. No change to personal authorization is needed at this time.
Is there a motion to hire two resource officers?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Frierson?
Second.
Second by McDowell. Questions or comments? Question, I I do have Chief Barton as, how long were we out of District Six and what were the reasons?
I believe we got out around twenty oh eight, if I recall. It's been it's been a few years. To be honest, I don't know the reason why.
And they have a, they also, if I'm correct, they hired a new security director with with the school that works closely with the police department?
Yes, sir, and and they've reorganized the schools, which is the reason for two S R Os, because both, now there's two middle schools, so we'll have a S R O in each school, each middle school.
In the discussions with them, will they be implementing safeguards at the schools? I know that at the schools you have to buzz in to get there. Will they be having issues such as bulletproof glass at the entries?
Yes, sir. So, at at the implementation or hiring of this of this new safety director, we have worked extensively with him to provide for and and help with planning and on protecting the schools where at all best cost we can. I know they have filed for some grant and received some grant money to help with that, and we continue to provide them training, both for their for the staff and and even for some of our for some of our politicians, but especially their administration, so they can understand what it is that we're looking for or what we do when we unfortunately, hopefully, never have to go in there for an event, but what what to expect when that happens. So, yes, we work hand in hand with them.
All right. Any additional questions?
Just a small comment. I want to commend Chief Barton and Administrator Nabel for the work that they've been doing with the school district to, you know, repair relationships and inform and educate on both sides, and I think it's going to make a significant impact within the community. Thank you for your leadership in that area.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McDowell.
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher.
Aye.
Commissioner Fireson.
Aye.
Mayor McKinney.
Aye, motion carries. Item number ten, departmental commentary. Director Ianson.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to remind everybody, it's Saturday, August sixth, with our annual city cleanup day. It'll be at eight AM to noon, at forty seven seven o'clock, in our parking lot here, in the business of the building. I would like to say there in St. Anne's there and on there, some residents in the front of the front of the car.
And it was a very successful event, the last year we did it, and I'm sure people have really appreciated it. There was some rumor that State Rep. Joyce Mason was also looking possibly to set up a shredding event for Zion residents. Is there any more information on that?
We're we're waiting for the the marketing materials from from her, but she was trying to coordinate it, I think, from ten to noon. Don't hold me to that, but at in the City Hall lot, that she would be offering shredding services for residents as well to kind of complement with the, just the general cleanup. A lot of people keep records for way longer than they need to, or documents becomes fire hazards, they don't know what to do with them. This is an opportunity that she's done in other communities, and she reached out to us to see if that's something that he would be able to host as well. So, as soon as we get that information from her, we'll share it out to all appropriate outlets.
Yes, State Rep. Mason has been great in in assisting our community on so many different issues, so we we thank her for that and wait for that information. Also, it'll be important for Zion residents, when they come, they have to show a driver's license, Zion Illinois driver, pallet driver's license from Zion, and hopefully they'll have a city sticker as well. Director Roberts.
Thank you, sir. I actually have several items that I can do with the council. First one is, I attended a meeting with Lake County Council of Mayors last week. They've used our application for the federal assist program for Galilee project for twenty four for twenty twenty-five. That was approved through the county. Now, that will move up, it was number three on their list, our project worth. That's one point two million dollar project, and that's an eighty twenty split. However, during that that meeting, I found out also, C M A P has started a new program. It's called toll credits, and it's for impoverished communities, that we can submit an additional application, our twenty percent will be covered, so this project could end up being a hundred percent federally funded. So, that was really good news. Next step on that is it goes up to C M A P. They normally follow whatever Lake County Mayor suggests, recommend that project, anticipating this to be fully approved by the end of the year. Lake County also, Lake County D O T is requesting residents to visit their website. They have a Lake County Look Forward website with a survey on it. They are asking citizens to help guide them in spending a hundred and thirty-five million dollars in ARPA funds. I went on there and suggested maybe Zion get forty million, but they've done a lot of that. You know, I didn't put that in there. So, any resident can go on lakecounty.gov and go to that site. And there's more people that try and, residents from our area, I think would be pretty helpful, maybe give them some guidance on bringing some funds up this way. We are submitting several projects, we're going to try and put through with them, through Lake County S and C, through Lake County D O T, and some other projects, but hopefully we can get some funding. Local projects, our twenty twenty-two road and alley program has started. We've probably seen some, a lot of contractors and equipment out there. That program started last week. That will finish up hopefully the first week of August. This Thursday, they will be grinding, I just got another day, grinding Elizabeth, twenty-second Street and Harlem Boulevard will be ground, and then Friday, the alleys that we have listed on that program will be ground, rest and graug over the weekend, and then they'll start next week, I'm hoping. We also have our twenty twenty-two water main project has kicked off. You've probably have seen them over on sale. That is replacing fifteen hundred liter feet of nineteen thirty-six inch water main. We're upgrading that to eight inch top iron water main. That is scheduled to complete that project at end of September, so they're going to be out there for a while. I do not have a schedule for our job alley project yet, I'm anticipating that starting the second week of August. Hopefully sooner, probably not.
Right, Director Roberts, that that council mayor's meeting is very interesting. We've been attending those for the last four years, and we get a lot of projects done through them.
Yes.
And the scoring, can you explain a little bit of the scoring, how it benefits our community, but the survey that goes out with, there's a way that we can get this out to our residents with all of the comments that we typically get about our roads, and they're like, the roads are in just repair everywhere.
Yes.
But we get a little bit of a scoring advantage because of our community and our demographics, and it's so so important that we attend these meetings and we support other municipalities with the work that they're having done as well.
I voted for one through sixteen. So, that was North Chicago, La Keegan, Lake Plough, they're doing a lot of lobbying now because they got turned down, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, and and the scoring methods, it's it's kind of across the board, but it's heavily weighted on the demographics of the communities, and that's driven off the C D B N G, I can't think of the acronym right now, Community Development.
Grants.
So, we're weighted a little heavier on that because of lower income.
Yes.
But that puts us into a higher category where we can receive more funds to get these projects done, receive more funding. The toll credits that they were, that's that new program, it's based on the same demographics. That is excess, let's say, excess money that's from a toll. It's a one through five. We usually score out in the four range now, so that's that's good for looking into the future, that we may be able to get some extra funding through that.
And and C M A P, for those of you who don't know, they do a tremendous job of outlining all the roads and bridges in the county. I think that they said there's something like thirty-six, almost thirty-six hundred and fifty bridges.
Yes.
In Lake County, Illinois. I mean, just some of the facts that they give and and knowing they know, really dig into the, not only the demographics of a community with the challenges of each community and presenting this stuff as they they move forward. So, they they they're a really good agency to, that's been working with us in the Lake County Council of of Mayors. Also, when we talk about the matching grants, I I know I was at a conference in Toronto about fifteen days ago, and it's the Great Lakes City, Great Lakes Saint Lawrence Cities Initiative, which is a bi-national committee that does a tremendous job of overseeing the Great Lakes and Saint Lawrence River Basins, but they're also looking at ways for a community like ours to be able to help assist us with the matching grant part, and that was part of the infrastructure plan, to be able to reduce that for communities that are financially challenged. So, we're coming at this from a lot of different angles, and because we're involved in these different communities and projects, we're we're getting some help that we really need.
Some of the grants that are offered out there are what you consider matching. They kind of take us out of it, that's why it's so important, some of these, the matching grant help comes into play a lot. So, basically, if you have a grant out there, they'll come out, and it has to be a project that's a million dollars or more. So, federally, they'll give you a million, you have to match in money, which is very hard for us to come up with. So, if we can tag on some of these other agencies that are offering to give us fifty percent of that, we could maybe possibly give, come up with five hundred, and they come up with another five hundred, and then we can get a two million dollar project. It's a lot of dance.
And Director Roberts also, thank your crew for all the work they're doing on the streets and the alleyways, the patching programs. There've been a lot of just positive comments throughout the community from from people about the work that's being done. Again, people talk about roadways and being able to get places, and I I know your crew are short-staffed, but they're doing a terrific job.
Thanks, sir.
Administrator Nabel, I'm going to go to Chief Barton, since Chief Chief Tree isn't here.
All right, Mr. Mayor, thank you again. I just, I'll, I guess I'll reiterate some of your comments from earlier, but our hearts go out to the the families and the residents of Highland Park, as well as the officers. I I know I've talked with my officers, it was a pretty traumatic event and scene, we sent a number of people down there for assistance, and ironically, the Major Crimes Task Force, which you approved this evening, which we're a part of, and so we investigate that as well. Frankly, I'm just sick of it, I'm tired of seeing these violent acts. I hope at some point, things change and we can, people realize the value of life and we can we can make a turn towards better, but until that happens, I would just encourage people, if they see something, they should say something, and we start this campaign all over, and see something, say something. Please notify us if you see something that's just out of the ordinary or suspicious. We will we will take a look at it. We don't need your name or your information, you're welcome to be anonymous as you as you want. You're welcome to also call eight four seven eight seven, or I'm sorry, eight four seven six six two twenty-two twenty-two, Lake County Crime Stopers. Again, they don't need your name, they just are looking for the information. We'd like to prevent these things if they, if we can, and, you know, sometimes you don't think the information is valuable, but when two or three other people provide some other information, then we can connect the dots in some cases, and it does help, so.
Yeah, that's such an important point for things that are going on in our community, for people to get involved, and we've talked about this for the last eight years that I've been on the council, just the importance of residents contacting someone with the city. If you go on the police, Zion Police website, Police Department website, missing a word there, you can get the information on the sergeants that are on duty, you can email them with issues in the area that you might be having, whether it's a civil disturbance of any kind, and they will respond to that accordingly, but we've got to get the participation from our residents. Again, we don't have the police staff that we like to have in terms of numbers. These guys are, and women are working really hard, but we also need the help of our residents. And I know that when you're talking about the Major Crimes Task Force, our department, Chief Barton, I'd like you to talk about that just a little bit, about how influential they've been with this task force and how they use our officers to be involved because of the experience that they have in the inland county.
Yes, sir, and, you know, I don't, I don't, it's a double-edged sword maybe sometimes. I don't know if it's a good thing that our officers have more experience and knowledge, but I would I would put our officers against any, you know, we have, we have a very experienced group of people that are very good investigators, and they work hard. We share these resources, that's that's how we're able to work on a lot of these cases, these cases. You know, it costs us nineteen hundred dollars, two thousand dollars annually. We contribute a couple people to that that task force to help mitigate some of those costs, and yes, we do go to other communities like Highland Park, but those those, that task force will come come here and help us investigate, so it helps reduce the cost of investigations, which, you know, can can really run quite a tad if if, frankly, if they're done right, and and now, as everything leans leads towards more technology-based investigation stuff, it takes it takes a long time, it takes a lot of time, a lot of hours. So, I'm very thankful to be part of the task force and and really, I pray for those those folks that are on that that group, because they see a lot, and and you really hope that they're able to provide, they're providing an outlet that's mentally clearing for them, and they don't continue to see the worst.
Yeah, one last thing I'd like to add to that is, you you mentioned that the task force, one of the things that we're seeing, the mayors, police chiefs, all of us are talking in the surrounding communities, because we do understand something, and I even had a conversation with the Kenosha Mayor and the Racine Mayor at this conference in Toronto, they understand the things that are happening in their communities, they're going to come our way, things that are happening in our community is going to go their way. So, there's a lot of discussion among the police chiefs in Lake County, across the border, and the mayors about the common issues that we face in trying to keep our communities safe. So, I think this is a, just a great time with all the technology have to be sharing the information that we have that can help our residents be safe. Thank you, Chief Barton. Administrator Nabel.
Thank you, Mayor. You may have noticed that I haven't been at the past couple council meetings, maybe you didn't, but we we, I've been at, this is a nuclear update, so we had the opportunity to work with the Nuclear Decommissioning Collaborative, as well as the Nuclear Energy Institute. The mayor and myself have spoke on different panels. At the Nuclear Energy Institute, they had a used fuel management conference that they do annually, as well as a decommissioning strategy forum. They asked us to share our story of our experiences, where we're at, what impact it's had for us, not only lessons learned over the past twenty years since closure, twenty-four years, but how things can be improved, decommissioning going forward for other plants, what things can be done, what to look out for, lessons learned for us, being a a nuclear storage site now. So, we got to share our story to basically the nuclear industry. There were representatives from the Nuclear Regulatory Commission there, there were representatives from the Department of Energy there, as well as a lot of nuclear physicists, a lot of big brains in the room there, but a lot of them did not know the extent of the aftermath of decommissioning. A lot of them go, okay, we we had our, we did a good job with our decommissioning, that everything's torn down, everything's restored, pat on the back, everyone goes home, not understanding the long-term impact of, we're still here, we still have the waste and getting that, and what we're doing with that. So, it was a good opportunity to get a lot of support for the nuclear bills that we have in Congress, for them to reach out to their associates, their peers, their legislators as they talk with them, because anything nuclear talk, it hits politicians. So, any any advocates we can get, sharing our story, pushing those bills, I think we we won some advocates there. We also had a really good opportunity to talk about site reuse, potential plans down the road. We did hear from the Nuclear Regulatory Commission that that site will be released to unrestricted use, not just agricultural, but unrestricted use. We're trying to carve out a separate, it's getting a little technical, but we're trying to carve out a separate license for the pad where the the waste is compared to the site as a whole, because right now, the license, talking with Nuclear Regulatory Commission there, the license is tied to the entire site, so technically, we're not decommissioned yet, because no site is ever decommissioned until the the waste is removed. They can't complete that last that last piece of it to consider the site decommissioned. So, we're trying to carve that out into a separate thing, so we can use the rest of it for potential site redevelopment. There's actually a lot of opportunities, a lot of discussion on that front, that I was, we were able to make. was, we were able to make connections with developers while we were at these, these conferences. But just, like I said, lessons learned going forward for other communities on the impact of decommissioning. I kind of equated decommissioning to a four-letter word. The, the plant was fine when it was here, it was good task base, it was good jobs, we accepted all of that for the icky stuff with the nuclear waste. Then decommissioning came, and the nuclear industry goes, decommissioning's good, and we're going, you took away everything that was good, and you left what was icky. And that's, decommissioning is not good from our perspective. So, it was a good, good chance to have that dialogue, bring attention to this, and kind of be a forefront for communities like ours nationally to, to try and make sure we have a voice out there. So, that's what, those just happen to line up with council meetings when we're out of those, so. But that's the update. Lot of good connections, a lot of good networking, a lot of prospective opportunities going forward. So, good things came out of that. We're still pushing.
Yes. And also, at this conference that I was at, congressperson Marcy Capter was there, and we're, I was able to interview her about the issues as it impacted, impacted the water area, and she's been an advocate for us in, in Congress, as was Senator Tammy Duckworth.
Yeah, they, they both co-sponsors of the draw, the bill, the [inaudible].
So, they were both part of the conference via Zoom that I was at, and I was able to interview both of them and talk about those issues, so. Any other commissioners?
I think one. Commissioner Fisher?
Just, you know, considering the somber events of yesterday, just a, a small bright spot locally here. For those who have not seen it yet, the Illinois State Beach Hotel has been renovated, and they're reopening. So, when you get an opportunity, go over and visit, and see, see the new amenities, and maybe, I think they have a new restaurant, so you might want to stop in and try them out, because that is definitely a destination draw for our community and brings people in, and so, something positive, so. And that's all I have for that.
All right. Probably chatted enough about a, a lot of different things here this evening. It's good to see everyone. I hope everybody had a, a really good fourth. And number 11, moving on to number 11, is announcements on July 19th, which is coming sooner or later. 6:00 PM, there's a Zion Town Board meeting, and of course, following that, 7:00 PM is a Zion City Council meeting. On August 2nd, 7:00 PM, there's a Zion City Council meeting. Item number 12, we do not need item number 12. We're good. So, we'll move from item number 12 to item 13. Is there a motion to adjourn? So, move, so move by Fryerson?
Second.
Second by McDowell? Clerk, please call and roll.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryson?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Thank everybody for coming tonight, and we'll see you on July 19th, not sooner.